I'd like to call the meeting, reorganization meeting of July 6, 2017, together. I'd like to start with a call to order, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance with Mr. Perino. Can we all stand for that, please?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the board clerk to do the roll call, please.
Here.
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 Okay.
I'd like to also move the approval of the agenda for the reorganization meeting. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And next, we'd like to have our new board members take the oath of office. We'll start with Keisha Zucks, please. If you could come to the microphone, and our board clerk will swear you in.
I, Keisha Zucks. Raise your right hand.
I, Keisha Zucks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Very good. Congratulations.
I'd now like to invite Kevin Gomez up to take his oath of office, please.
Thank you.
Yes, we do have a...
I, Kevin Gomez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of school board member.
Of the office of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities. Thanks.
Congratulations. Mr. Gomez, I just need you to sign.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'd now like to move to take nominations for election. Oh, that's right. You've been sitting here for so long.
I, Lou Pierre.
I, Lou Pierre.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of school board member.
The duties of the office of school board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I'd now like to move for nomination for the election, and then, following that, the oath of office of the President of the Board of Education. So the nominations are open. Do I have any recommendations?
I would like to nominate John Perino for president.
Second.
If ever there was a person more ready and capable of fulfilling that office of president, it's John Perino. He's been on the board for how many years? He's been part of every committee, and I'm saying this in all seriousness, every committee. He's a face of the district out in public. He's highly respected, highly capable, and he will make an excellent president of Board of Education. I hereby nominate John Perino.
And the second was?
I second that.
Paula? Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Therefore, John, congratulations. If you'd like to go up.
I, John Perino.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of the President of the School Board.
Of the office of the President of the School Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I just need you to sign.
Thanks.
Mr. Perino.
Sign the book.
Sign the book.
I'll tell you, if I can do half as well as Mr. Strata and Mr. Warren did, then we're on the right track here. We have two former presidents, president emeritus, in the audience tonight who both did an excellent job as board members and as leaders. Thank you.
I'd like to entertain nominations for the position of Vice President of the Middletown School Board. Mrs. Blumenau.
I'd like to nominate Pastor John Williams for Vice President.
I'd like to second that.
I'd like to second the nomination.
Okay. Do you have that?
Kevin, second.
Kevin, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Bishop Williams.
I, John Williams.
I, John Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of New York.
And the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of President, Vice President of the School Board.
Of the office of Vice President of the School Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Good, John. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Attorney John Miller here to present a discussion of the open meeting law. John is a member of the firm Bonchonik and King. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perino. I'm John Miller. I'm one of the school districts attorneys. It's tradition at Middletown to have the school attorney say a few words at the re-arch meeting about the board's commitment to conducting board business and school district business in an open and transparent fashion, so they asked me to talk briefly about that. I believe the emphasis was on briefly, so we'll keep the pain to a minimum for you folks. One of the ways in which the board engages in that transparency and openness is by compliance with our state's open meetings law. Notice of the public's board meetings is routinely given, or of the board's meetings, rather, is routinely given to the public and to the news media, so you know when those occurrences are happening. They're also posted on the school district's website. And pursuant to the open meetings law, records, any records that are expected to be discussed at the board are typically made and available in advance of the board meeting. Most board business is discussed in public. There are some exceptions for exempt meetings, matters that are made confidential by state or federal law is the primary example of an exempt meeting. Or when the board goes into a properly convened executive session, that typically would be to discuss things like proposed, pending our current litigation, collective bargaining negotiations with the district's unions and union employees, personnel matters of all different kinds, and grading of student exams and such. The board welcomes public comment at board meetings in accordance with the open meetings law and the board's policies, and the public has a right under our law to tape record and audio record board meetings as well. And minutes of all the board's meetings are made available within a matter of weeks after each board meeting, recording the vote and the action. So these are just some of the ways in which this board and this district maintain that commitment of transparency and accountability. And last but not least, the board is committed to maintaining the confidentiality of matters acquired by them as board members during the course of their official duties, and this includes but is not limited to maintaining the confidentiality of the board's executive sessions. So that's just a brief primer on the open meetings law and the board's commitments under that body of law. Thank you.
Seeing none, we'll move on. Next subject, annual appointments, approval of annual appointments. Resolve that the reading of the annual board appointments for the period of July 1, 2017 through July 30, 2018 be waived and the appointments listed be approved.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Paul and Linda.
Yes.
And we have with us tonight the Treasurer of the District, Shelley Cook. Do you want to come on up? And I believe Mr. Miller is...
Nope.
Taryn, you're going to administer the oath of office?
We have to vote.
Vote.
Okay.
If we need to motion. Vote on annual appointments first.
Appointments, okay. Annual appointments, we have to have, this is an action item, correct?
I'm in favor.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nope.
Thank you. Motion unanimously carried. Thank you.
Now we'll do the appointment of Shelley Cook, Treasurer. I, Shelley Cook. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of the office of Treasurer. Of the office of Treasurer. According to the best of my ability. According to the best of my abilities.
Taryn Clark, and Taryn's doing an excellent job.
I, Taryn Clark.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk according to the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district clerk according to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much. job. Another action item, authorization to attend conferences.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve, motion for approval to delegate the superintendent of schools.
We have to vote on that.
Okay, authorization to attend conferences, action item.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Any objection to approving all of the action items as one vote?
No. No.
Now I have, motion to approve all the action items as one vote. Vince?
Second.
Vince and Mrs. Knapp. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Passed unanimously. Let's see, the next item is... See, board committee assignments, and I know we've been...
Was that included in the upper ones? Okay, so we need to do audit next.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Go ahead.
I'd like to be considered as the chair of that committee.
That's fine, yes, okay.
We gladly will accept you as the chair.
Accept that, Vince?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand there's a pay increase.
And everybody has a list of the committees at your seat, and if there's any change, you can let either myself or Bishop Williams know that. As I say, we've worked on that, Bishop Williams, myself, and Mrs. Clark for the past week.
So just as a point of reference, right now, we're approving Chuck Jones as the community member. All right? And then we'll go into the appointment as chairman.
So moved.
So moved. Second?
Second.
Second, okay, that's, do you have that? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't think Mr. Jones is here tonight, but he said he would accept that, so we're good there. Okay. The next, let's see. Review the board committee assignments, and everyone has...
Is that where we do this? So, so moved?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Any discussion? Vince is...
I would like to be considered as chairperson of that committee.
Okay. Any objections to that?
What are we doing?
I went ahead of it before.
He went ahead, okay. We're having trouble hearing tonight.
Yeah, it's right out.
Unless I put it in my mouth, I don't know. Pretty close, Bill.
Okay, so now we're back on the audit again.
Is that the audit committee that Mr. Chrysantos seeks to be chair of? I'll second the nomination.
Okay.
In favor?
Is that an action item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Linda, it's just, it's not a point, it's membership. So we're reviewing the board committees right now. We're reviewing the board committees right now.
I think everybody has that list. Isn't it necessary to read that list?
You have your list here, John, somewhere.
Okay.
You can use mine.
Okay, so I need clarification. I thought we already reviewed this, and that if we had any issues with it, we were going to contact the district clerk or John. Did I misunderstand that?
That's correct.
That's correct, you're correct.
So we're done with it?
We're done, okay.
Because there was only one change that you just acted on.
Thank you. Did we do the audit? We did Chuck, right?
Yes.
So my next question is, I don't see the financial one on the back. Do we have to have something for that, or does that go on the other meeting?
Action items.
I got it now.
I think so.
Doing a good job, John.
Motion to adjourn. Vince? Do you have that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimously passes unanimously. Okay. All right, let's go right into the regular meeting. Let's see how it's... Okay, let's call to order the regular meeting, the Middletown Board of Education, July 6, 2017.
Pledge of allegiance.
Yep, the president's calling the meeting to order.
Order.
We'll start with the pledge.
Let's start with, Ms. Zucks, could you do the pledge of allegiance, please, for...
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could remain standing, remain standing for a moment of silence, please. This moment of silence, it's for Mr. Louis Scranno. And Mr. Scranno, the late husband of Ray Scranno, and Ray Scranno taught for many, many years, over 30 years, at what was Emecanix Town, and of course, it's Willie Mae Carter today. Mrs. Scranno was very much involved in education. He was the athletic director for the Goshen School System, as well as a coach. He then went on to a real estate career, very active in the community. He was a member of, among other clubs, the Middletown Elks Club. In addition, he served in the, he served in the military, in the Army, I believe, in the Korean conflict. Very, very well-known in the community. Mr. Scranno will most definitely be missed. Thank you so much. Mr. Gomez, could you please read the mission of the Middletown School District?
Thank you, Mr. President. The mission of the N. Larson School District of Middletown reads as follows. "We strive to provide healthy, sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of our society."
Thank you so much, Mr. Gomez. Mrs. Clark, could you please call the roll?
Here, Mr. Chrysantos.
Here.
Gomez?
Here.
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 So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve the minutes of the June 20, 2017, as presented.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously, thank you. Now we have a very fine ceremony, the recognition of our district's employees who are retiring, who have provided many, many years of fine service. I know the people, and I've worked with them in various capacities. Dr. Eastwood?
Yep, we have 21 staff members that are retiring this year. If you combine their tenure in the district, it's over 462 years, so we're losing a lot of knowledge from these veterans, and we would like to congratulate them and thank them for the service that they've provided us over the years. What I'd like to do is ask the Board of Education, there's a table, as you can see, over against the wall there, if the Board of Education can go over there, what I'd like to do is introduce three of these retirees who are here tonight, and ask the Board of Education to greet them and thank them personally. What I'd like to do is to start with Denise Kniebel, who was a teaching assistant at the high school. Next, I'd like to introduce Roberta Moncach, who has had twenty-three years as a music And finally, Rhonda Parrott, who's had eighteen years as a special education teacher at These crystal apples, we give to our retirees as a jester of thanks for everything that they've done for our students, and for our community and school district, so thank you very much, we really appreciate it, it's been wonderful.
Personnel action items. See if there's no objection. Can we approve personnel memorandums? One A instructional, one B non-instructional, one C administrative, one D instructional, one E non-instructional, one F instructional, and one G non-instructional. Okay, Vince, any discussion?
Yes, we, if I'm correct, did not approve the agenda, correct? We did? Okay.
Yes.
So at this point in time, what I'd like to do is to propose the amendment of the personnel section of the agenda, and I'll read this, to amend that section six to allow the superintendent to create and to create a position or contract for appropriate evening security services for district facilities during the evening hours of the summer.
So moved. Any discussion?
Can you explain what this is about? Sure, sure. Basically, during the summertime, we have more activity that occurs during the evening hours around our facilities, and what we're seeking now, after some concerns that have been communicated to us relative to individuals hanging around the facilities or misusing the facilities in evening hours, to be, that, those issues to be monitored by the school district. As a result of those requests, we're creating and/or contracting for appropriate security services to assure that our facilities are safe and that they're not being mistreated by individuals.
Any other questions on this or comments? Thank you, Dr. Eastwood. Kevin, go ahead.
And just for the, how will this, will this be a vehicle security or individuals within the buildings?
No, this would be an individual that would move between the school buildings on a continual basis during the hours, I believe, of four to twelve midnight, in either our vehicle or their contracted vehicle.
And would this person have like some kind of direct contact with, say, the police or local law enforcement?
Correct. When necessary, they would call the appropriate law enforcement agencies, if necessary.
Any other questions on that? Thank you so much.
First, we have to approve the amendment.
Okay.
And then we're going to vote on that now, the amendment of the personnel.
Did we have a first and a second? All right, let's, a motion to approve the amendment as stated?
So moved.
See?
So seconded.
Do you have that?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
See, we've discussed that, we've had discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Now, we vote on section six, all personnel.
Okay. Next, section six, as we mentioned, we're, we've agreed to approve these as one. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And we had discussed this before, so we're good with this.
Motion carried.
Motion carried unanimously. Next, the first opportunity to address the board, and I think, excuse me, let me go back, we have introduction of personnel, I'm sorry. Mrs. Sorrentino? Do you want to introduce your partner, Tracy, up there? In case people...
This guy?
The man in black.
The man in black.
I was gonna say...
Good evening, Dr. Eastwood, President Perino, members of the board. I would like to, along with my STEM instructional leader, Mr. Norville Connell...
Good evening.
Welcome Ms. Emily Young to our staff, and introduce her to you. She will be our librarian, very exciting. She joins us with, from upstate Saratoga, where she is in a high school library up there, she's transferring down to us. She has a background in social studies, as well as literacy and library sciences, so welcome Emily.
Say, would you like to say a few words?
No, she is a librarian, we have to be quiet now.
Thank you so much.
I will say that when Richard and I interviewed her, we were very pleased with her determination to take the library into the twenty-first century, and also make sure that it blends in very well with the initiatives at the high school for the cooperative learning environments, and also the use of technology as research tools. So she's going to be a fabulous addition.
Very excited, thank you so much.
First opportunity to address the board. Anyone who would like to address the board, please sign in. Number four minutes, we don't dialogue. Anybody? Don't tell me you had your scion the first time, Andy. Okay. Let's go on with letters. Mrs. Clark, do you have any letters?
Yes, one.
Okay, go ahead.
We have one, it's from Gerta Crogslin, she was the recipient of the Martin Delugatz Award this year. Dear Middletown Board of Education, I would like to thank you for presenting me with the Martin Delugatz Award at your commencement exercise last Friday evening. It was indeed an honor to have been chosen from so many qualified people in Middletown. One of my favorite achievements during my era as president of the Kiwanis Club of Middletown was the inception of the dictionary project for all third graders in the Middletown School District. It is still a favorite project for all of the members of our club. They love to go to the schools and present the dictionaries to the students. This project would not be possible without the support and commitment from all of the members of our club who helped raise the funds. Our Kiwanis Club also enjoys working with the students in the key club and builders club. Teaching the students the idea of service to their community is the goal of both clubs. On behalf of all the members of the Kiwanis Club of Middletown, thank you for this recognition, I look forward to working together in the future. Sincerely, Gerta Crogslin.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. Superintendent's report, Dr. Eastwood, this evening?
No, they're not. We are entering the beginning of our summer, which is, once again, very busy with capital projects. All of the capital projects seem to be on target, and look to be completed before the beginning of school. So I wanted to make the public aware that all of our projects will be completed on time, and bring our school facilities up to another notch of excellent condition and preparedness for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Eastwood. Perhaps at the next meeting, maybe we could have just a couple sentences on what's going on in each building?
Sure.
Maybe Mr. Scott would like to do that. Would you like to do that at the next meeting, Tom? Give you a little time there. Thank you so much. Okay, now for the action items. Approval of financial memorandum number two?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Proof of special service memorandum, number one, motion to approve the special service memorandum as presented?
So moved.
Mrs. Knapp?
Mr. Pierre?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Next item. Resolution to accept thirty twenty-eight settlement regarding employees, number three two five two. Resolved that the board approved the settlement of the education law, section three oh two oh eight, proceeding in which teaching assistant three two five two agreed to the following penalties for calling in sick on two days when sickness did not, in fact, prevent the teaching assistant from working, a formal reprimand, a disciplinary fine of twelve hundred dollars, and no recrediting of the two sick days used.
So moved. Second.
Just, we've discussed this in an executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carried unanimously. See, now we've come to the second opportunity to address the board. Whoa, yeah, come on there, Mr....
We know that you guys...
Why don't you guys get up?
They're still, the evening is young yet.
This week.
Good evening, just wanted to wish you all, well, number one, congratulations, Mr. Perino, congratulations Pastor Williams in your new leadership roles in the board, and I'd like to wish you a year of, a year of nothing, because that would certainly be something.
Thank you. Thank you.
A year of nothing.
Any committee reports this evening? Okay, if not...
Mr. President, well, I did have the opportunity to attend the common council meeting, a meeting with Mr. Perino, where he did introduce me as the new liaison for the city of Middletown, and I look wholeheartedly forward to being able to do that. I believe that one of the ways that we could accomplish even greater good for our students and for our school district is by building stronger relations with fellow elected officials on sixteen James Street, and I look forward, on behalf of the school board, to serve as a bridge to our members of the common council, the administration, the city hall, and moving forward for the good of our students, building that solid bridge that they deserve for the future. And I thank Mr. Chairman and all the members of the board.
Thank you. And, you know, I think a perfect example of cooperation, which, two recent examples, there's many others. Two recent examples, in graduation, the city provided, along with the town of Lock Hill, the various law enforcement agencies, and Middletown, the fire, police were present, and the Department of Public Works. Also, if you noticed, in the Middletown Times record a couple of days ago, it showed the, what our food service is doing in cooperation with the Recreation Commission, providing lunch at our playgrounds. So there's really a lot of cooperation between the two. Obviously, there's always room with anything for expansion. Now we come to, any other committee reports? Board member comments?
Position script, go on the table. This is...
Okay, let's go around. Kevin?
First, I need to express my appreciation to the people of the residents of the Middletown School District for the opportunity to be able to serve as a board member. There's a very famous proverb that says, instruct the child in the way they shall go, so when they grow old, they will not depart. And I look forward to working with my outstanding colleagues to be able to accomplish that for our children. And also increase awareness among the public of why it's important to be involved with our local school board, to participate in the school board elections. A school board election may not have the fanfare of a presidential election, but the decision that we do in the school board may well determine the road for who will be that presidential candidate thirty, forty, or fifty years from now. So we look forward to the input of the public to help make it sure that whoever gets elected to the White House will be a great candidate, and of course, will come from the Middletown School District.
Thank you. Mr. Pierre?
I would also like to thank the public that voted for me to become, to continue as a board member for this district. The last three years was a, were a learning process for me on this board, it was my first time ever serving on any board of any kind, and I appreciate all the experience that I've gained through the process. I'd also, I'd also like to thank Mr. Perino for his support, Mrs. Luminal, Pastor Williams, and everyone else who's supported me. I thank you very much for your support. As I've just sworn to, I do intend on serving to the best of my ability on this board and to serve this district. Also...
Also, I attended the Honor Society nominations of the newly inducted members at the Presidential Park Elementary Schools. I just want to congratulate all of them and all the other nominees and all the other schools, Monae and Willie Mae Carter, Flint Towers, Maple Hill, also at the high school. Congratulations on all the inductees. And I hope to continue and work with them as well to help them grow and help them progress as individuals in this district and all the great, towards great careers, hopefully in the future. Thank you.
Mrs. Knapp?
She said no.
No? Okay, let's swing it over. Mrs. Zucks?
I'd like to thank everyone for voting for me and for allowing me to speak to the citizens of the board to be able to help as much as I can to be a part of their students' lives and to help them grow as well as myself grow as a person here in the community. I also was able to, this year, this was my last year as PTO president, and it was exciting to watch my daughter graduate. And we did the all-night grad party, which was successful once again. And going forward, we have to make sure that we continue to support our seniors as they're graduating. So, this year, as, you know, we move forward, we're pushing them through and getting them prepared, but at the end of the year, making sure that the senior graduation is still important. That is one of the things that I want to make sure that we're looking at for, for the end of the year. I would like to make sure that that's a goal, and I wanted to thank everybody for their support.
And Mrs. Zucks was, as she alluded to, the chair of the...
PTO.
PTO, and also the all-night graduation party did an excellent job, is my understanding, on that. And it's a big job to organize that. I think Mrs. Blumenau, weren't you the, a while ago?
I was.
Yeah.
For a few years.
Yeah?
It's a, it's a nice way to get involved. And my co-conspirator over there, I think as, as a parents' club president, and we were a parent, parents' club, or a PTO president, you automatically have the children's best interests. It's just kind of, you're there and you're fundraising and, you know, it's always, we're always in the schools and we have a presence there, so we have that connection to the students and to the parents. And, and so that was, for me, that was a great catalyst to board, to a board seat. And so, I've enjoyed that transition quite a bit and knowing that I was able to, I think any, any, any president who's leaving, leaving a post, you want to make sure that you're leaving it to someone who's going to carry on what's going on. And I know that Carol Dillon before us was a great president, so are all these great community supporters. So, our seniors deserve, at the high school, our seniors deserve a great celebration of their accomplishments. And I agree with Mrs. Zucks that we should continue to do that, so.
Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Blumenau?
Just congratulations to our new board members. Welcome. Wishing you the best of luck and know that you have a good support team here to help you ask questions. That's the only way to learn. And it'll all be, feel a little, a little awkward and confusing at first, but know that we're all here and we're here to support you. So, we just want you to be successful. And same goes for our new president and our vice president. Congratulations and strength in your new positions.
Thank you. Mr. C.
I'd like to, as others have said, welcome our new board members, Mrs. Zucks and Mr. Gomez. Looking forward to your unique input, you know, into the Board of Education and the district. And welcome back, Mr. Pierre. I was excited when, Kevin's my neighbor, actually. He lives on the opposite corner, and we got to know each other. And I was excited when you said that you were interested in running for the Board of Education. It's, it's going to be a good, good fit. And again, congratulations to our new leadership. Between the two of you, I think you know everybody in the Middletown community. Seriously, right? I mean, your diversity and the way you work with the, the community and what have you. So, this is a good fit. I think we're going to have an excellent year. I look forward to our normal way of doing business of constantly moving forward, never being stagnant, and we're going to have another good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crescendo, so much. Bishop Williams?
Well, first, I want to say congratulations again and welcome to the new board members, Mrs. Zucks and Mr. Gomez. We're very happy to have you here. And again, congratulations. Well, I don't know, sometimes you say congratulations and sometimes I just say I'm praying for you. You're going to learn a lot. And sometimes it'll be frustrating, but it'll, at the end of the day, will always be very fulfilling, because it's the right place to be when it comes to the kids and our students. And so, congratulations. And then, congratulations again and welcome back, as, as Mr. Crescendo said, to Mr. Pierre. Glad to, glad to have you back here, back on board. And then, congratulations to Mr. Perrino. I think this is your season and this is your time, and together we'll get through this and we'll make it work.
It seemed to.
Thank you, thank you all of fellow board members for your confidence in us. We're going to do the best of our, best that we can, to the best of our abilities, to try to do a good job. And I'm sure there's not a person that's sitting at this table that will not tell us when we're not doing a good job. So, but always tell us, tell us when we're doing a good job, too. So, we'll balance it out. But thank you, thank you for that. Congratulations to all of our graduates. This is our first board meeting since graduation. So, congratulations to all of our graduates. Congratulations to the, to the staff at the high school who put on, put on such a wonderful graduation, even though we had to move indoors. I was very excited to come back and very excited to be there. As, as most of you know, I made my quick one-day run and had lunch in Barbados on Thursday and flew back, flew back on Friday morning. And although, although my conference was still going on there, I came back because I wanted to see several students from my congregation graduate and also have the opportunity to be able to see so many other students that we watched grow up, graduate. So, kudos to all of you that were involved and staff and the administration involved in making that come off without, without a hitch. Really, it came off without a hitch. And so, we're, we're thankful again, looking forward to a good school year. I want, I want to thank Dr. Eastwood real quick for the, for the personnel memorandum and the position of having security to go around and, and also take the time and opportunity to remind the public that our playgrounds and use of our playgrounds are privileged. They're privileged, just like use of the city playgrounds and city, the city parks are privileged. And would encourage you to, to take it as if it's your own, because really, at the end of the day, it is. And so, if you see, if you see individuals who are, are not treating the grounds or treating the, the equipment right, please, please say something. And if you're afraid to say something to that individual, please make a phone call to the necessary individuals who can say something, because at the end of the day, it belongs to all of us, and we need to respect it, respect each other, and respect, respect our public and our community. So, thank you and appreciate you all.
Thank you so much, Bishop Williams. And I'd like to extend the same comments that Bishop Williams and the rest of the board made, Mr. Gomez and Mr. Pierre. Congratulations to our new members. Congratulations to all the 2017 graduates. And we have one person in the audience, Mrs. Mortelaro, who does an excellent job. And thank you, Fran, for all the work you do in this district. I want to thank the two presidents, Mr. Warren and Mr. Strata, for attending this evening.
The last two presidents.
And thank you for all the work you've done on the Board of Education and in the And before I call for a motion to adjourn the meeting, I see the Haynes family is here. And thank you for coming. And I, I know Melanie Haynes is a, is a doctor of veterinary medicine, and she's at the, she currently works at PetSmart, so this is, she graduated from the Middletown School System. And congratulations, you both do an excellent job of parenting. You've been involved since the beginning with your, with your children, and I want to thank you so much.
Did they have any comments?
Do you have any comments? We're going a little out of order here, but you came in late. We'll let you go to the mic and make a comment.
You came in just before meditation.
Make an exception. Thank you. But thank you for all that you've done for this district and your family. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
No discussion on that?
What's the date of the next meeting?
Next meeting is July 20th. Am I right, Mrs. Clark? July 20th. Thank you so much. And we got through it in expeditious manner.
Thank you.
Thank you.